Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to their republic, which stands one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Do may I please have the open public speaking text?
Read it.
So showing these things rooted so you have it great.
Tonight is it's going to be handled by the open public meetings app. It is to make sure that everything is appropriate with Governor Bronson, Governor Brian's Sunshine Act. So that the general public is aware and on notice of everything that is going to be taking place tonight. As such, it complies with the open public meeting act.
Okay, thank you, counselor. We're going to begin with the minutes I have. We have minutes from January ninth. Sorry, roll call, please.
Mr. Bressing.
Here.
Mr. Bernstein.
Here.
Dr. Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Fleming.
Yeah.
Mr. Riker.
Here.
Mr. Sullivan.
Here.
Mr. Marzo. Mr. Heller.
Here.
Mr. Wall. Mr. Herring. Mr. Herman.
Thank you. Good, thank you. We have the minutes that were circulated for the January ninth meeting. Can I please get a motion to approve the minute?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, please note.
I'm I think it's better we do the roll call.
Local?
Yeah.
Okay, so just local, please.
Mr. Bressing.
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein.
Yes.
Dr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Heller.
Yes.
Mr. Herring. Mr. Herman.
Yes.
Mr. Herring. Thank you.
Hey, can I please get a motion to pay the vouchers?
So move second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is any engineering and planning matters for tonight?
Nothing I, Mr. Chairman, but I do have an item under changes to the agenda schedule.
Okay, would we like to?
It doesn't really matter where it goes. There was some discussion as far as moving the meeting times from seven thirty. I plead to seven. I think I also will met six thirty, but it doesn't really matter. I've worked with Laura and we've established that August, I'm sorry, April third can be the first time we can meet at six thirty. Or seven thirty, whatever the board's call is, but that was the question because a lot of applications have noticed already for seven thirty. And we can take care of them or hear them or carry them to a six thirty meeting if we don't finish on that that particular night. So words call on as far as, you know, time they want to start.
Thank you. So I guess we're really discussing starting from the April fourth meeting and on.
April third.
April third meeting and on, sorry. So does anyone have any preference? Seven, seven thirty, six thirty?
I think seven is a good time.
Seven.
Except I know Mr. Fleming had a concern with six thirty, so.
I think everybody is okay with seven, so I guess we'll keep it at seven. I guess we should make a motion to.
Mr. Chairman, just just a question or clarification. When we started, it was like a three hour meeting. There was a hard stop at ten thirty. If an application was getting closer, there was the finishing, the board would, you know, extend the courtesy or whatever. But just, you know, so the applicants know or if the board, you know, they want to keep it open, that's fine. But I'm just bringing out before it was a hard stop at ten thirty. Now I'm thinking hard stop at ten.
Okay, now we do have the option, though, to keep it open in case.
Of course, of course, or also if the applicant wants to carry, you know, to a different, you can cut it short too.
Mm hmm. Does anyone have any comments on that? Okay, so can I have a motion to move it to seven o'clock?
I want to make a motion to move the meetings to seven o'clock, starting April third meeting, I think it was.
April third.
Correct. April third meeting.
Sorry.
Okay, I'm just gonna roll call.
Mr. Bressing.
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein.
Yes.
Dr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Fleming.
Yeah.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Heller.
Yes.
Mr. Herman.
Yes. Okay, now, before we get to moving any applications, we have, I believe, one resolution for tonight. Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one. Resolution of the planning board of the Texas Jackson County motions in New Jersey. Confirming the elections of officers, appointment of professional selection of personnel and the appointment of the board's recording secretary. And please get a motion to move.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bressing.
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein.
Yes.
Dr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Heller.
Yes.
Mr. Herman.
Yes. And before we get into the applications, I believe we have a few that have to be moved, rescheduled.
There was a number that were carried, Mr. Chairman. Commodore one thirty-five Commodore LLC was carried to unspecified date. Bellevue Estates was carried as well. Bellevue Estates block thirty-nine oh two lots fifty-eight across the board LLC. They were moved as well. The third three forty West Commodore LLC was was carried as well. And I believe we have Mr. Alfieri here requesting time extension on a county line construction.
Well, just just for clarification. Trying to remove all the applications.
So we I have the first one on the agenda, which was Bennett Mills Realty. That we saw, we requested that it be carried to the March twentieth meeting. And if it is, we we would certainly grant the board the extension, but we would need to announce. Unless we're going to reknow this and then I'm not whatever the board wants to do. I think we agreed on that one. We would reknow this.
We should renotice.
Okay.
Mr. Alfieri.
That's fine. So is can that be placed on the March twentieth agenda?
Yes, so can I please get a?
Okay, I was looking at.
Uh, March twentieth, feeling of Chandler holding.
Correct. It's one application on March twentieth currently, but it's a school.
Four schools, right? Okay, so how about April third? I'm going to be here anyway. It looks like I didn't know about that until just now, but April third work. Seven.
Seven o'clock.
So I will renotice, but that'll be April third then. And we'll grant the board an extension through April thirtieth, just in case, if that's okay with everyone.
Okay. Okay, I was have a motion to move to April third.
I'll make a motion to move it to April third.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bressing.
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein.
Yes.
Dr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Fleming.
Yeah.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Heller.
Yes.
Mr. Herman.
Yes.
And then the last one on the agenda, we also requested that it be carried. We don't have, we're not seeking a date at this point, so once we ask to go back on the agenda, we'll we'll renotice.
I believe it is customary for the board here to place it some at some later point on the agenda that way you have time and we.
That's fine.
Keep track of every application. Any.
You want to do April third also while we're.
We could push it out six months. We could. As he waves time.
April third, you'll be here anyway.
Right, exactly. So.
Okay, so can I please?
Make a motion to place it on April third agenda.
Sorry.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bressing.
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein.
Yes.
Dr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Fleming.
Yeah.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Heller.
Yes.
Mr. Herman.
Yes.
And the we'll grant an extension through April thirtieth on that as well. Thanks. Thank you on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you. Now, the other two applications, I believe, mentioned.
They were carried.
They were carried and are they being rescheduled any for the date just to keep clarity and keep schedule?
Now, I believe that Mrs. Jennings requested three twenty. I don't know if the calendar can compensate.
Miss Jennings will be here in two weeks, so maybe we could put it there and have her move it here.
Aren't they awfully big? That's those schools, boys. That's going to be a lot of testing.
She, I believe, based upon the circumstances of that one, she may need a little bit more time to.
I'm saying just just for scheduling the carrier so that when she's here, she could waste time and push it off.
Okay.
It'll be on February sixth.
Mr. Chair. She's going to be here for that.
Mr. Chairman, what's the date of the next meeting?
February sixth is the next meeting, so she's going to be here. Let's she she has the whole agenda, so maybe we could carry it there and let her take it from there.
Just to make sure we don't have a waiver issue, but.
Make sure. Okay, so are you okay with that? So she's going to be here anyway on the sixth. That way she could waste time and request a new date. I apologize. If Bellevue Estates. Three down and then more. To February twentieth.
More is under the sex. It is in center. You want more, I guess.
Okay. Okay, so well, is that okay if we move to the twentieth?
That is entirely your decision as a board.
If it's got a motion to move it to the twentieth.
Make a motion to move Bellevue Estates to the twentieth.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bressing.
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein.
Yes.
Dr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Fleming.
Yeah.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Heller.
Yes.
Mr. Herman.
Yes, thank you. And I believe there is one more still remaining. So three forty, yes. It was the other one thirty-five.
One thirty-five Commodore, correct.
Okay, they they waived time. One thirty-five Commodore.
In the email, let me just check the remember that she said.
Isn't that the one you moved to the zone more?
No, it was a it was an issue regarding. Yeah, it was an issue regarding split zoning on the property, so it's going to be their choices of what to do moving forward. But Mrs. Jennings requested that it be carried in the future. She also requested March twentieth twenty twenty-three. I know the calendar is exceptionally full on that day. If I can maybe reach out to Ms. Jennings and request that she.
We're talking.
Forty five day.
We're talking about two different applications.
When this this Crimco.
I'm I'm referring to block.
Oh, no, I I apologize, this I.
Wasn't that moved to the zoning board?
Correct, Michelle, that that was. So I'm actually talking about the same one. I just said non instead of, I said it was Crimco.
So they're they want to stay on our.
Miss Miss Crimco asked to be put on three twenty based on the correspondence. I know that the bucket that night is incredibly full.
She'll never make it.
Yeah, with that being said, you know, I would like to get a waiver from her in order to proceed forward, but she still has to. They still have to figure out what they want to do with the applications.
Currently, we have a waiver till the end of March.
I do not have the exact timeframe in my hands, but I can reach out to Miss Crimco after the meeting and figure that one out.
So it's it's just carried. It's simply called carried.
Are you okay with carrying without putting it back on the agenda?
I don't think we can put it on the agenda because.
We don't have the consent.
We don't have the consent.
Okay, so.
Well, no, she she Miss Crimco did consent to.
The twenty.
She she did in the email correspondence. She did.
She may have been interested in the twentieth, but we have four schools on the twentieth.
Correct, we have a significant dog.
We sure do. We can move her to the twentieth.
So.
And then if you could reach out to her and suggest she.
I will.
Ask for a continuance.
Okay, so she did say over here that she will be moved to the twentieth. And if she would like to go ahead with the application, she will renotice for the hearing on the twentieth. So for now, can I please get any comments?
The thirty or the twentieth is fine, but in my mind, you know, it's already set. You're you're behind. You're you're last on the agenda that day. And the chance you're getting hurt are slim to none. I think once the applicant figures that out, there'll probably some letter carriers to some future date.
Correct, but right now, for the purpose of scheduling, we'll put it to the twentieth. So can I please get a motion to move it to the twenty?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bressing. Mr. Bernstein.
Yes.
Dr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Fleming.
Yeah.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Heller.
Yes.
Mr. Herman.
Yes, thank you. Now, moving. Moving right ahead to any miscellaneous legal matters to be discussed.
Not at this time.
Thank you, counsel. Moving ahead to the applications, we have block two zero one oh one lot thirty county line construction for a time extension. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair members of the board, Salvatore Alfieri on behalf of the applicant. We're here requesting the first of our potential three one-year extensions. This was a five lot subdivision variance free, except that the sixth lot was a stormwater management lot, which had bug variances associated with it. But it's five building lots and eight point two acres. My client has been working with the DEP. The LOI has expired because he had an LOI almost five years ago now. And when they went back to the DEP, they also need to get a new flood plains permit, so. If we were to get the one year extension, it would get us to October of this year. And all likelihood, we won't be ready by October of this year because the DPs takes a little while. So if we can get an extension through October of next year, I won't have to come back this October and explain it to you again. But otherwise, at the very least, we need October of twenty twenty-three.
If they're clean, Mr. Peters, I.
I wouldn't I wouldn't have really any objection to the request. It's would have he would have expired at ten nineteen twenty-two this year. One year extension, we just get him to twenty-three, you know, less than a year, and he's entitled to three. So I'd say, you know, give him the two and we hit it. It'd still have one more.
And and before you go to Ernie, I checked the zoning today just to make sure and the zone hasn't changed since the approval, so nothing's changed. Unless Ernie tells me differently.
Well, now I can't charge Mr. Alfieri's account because that's all I had to say. The zoning's unchanged, so there's no protection from zone change is one of the underlying reasons for asking for a time extension. In this particular case, zoning hasn't changed, so all the same rules are in effect.
Okay, any comments in port?
Were you allowed to give him the two year?
Yes, you are.
Okay. Just want to make that clear.
It would if if granted, what we've requested would be October twenty twenty-four would be would count as the second of the potential threat. Three one-year extensions.
Okay.
Like to make a motion before, I believe, you have to open it up to the public first.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing seeing no. Come forward. I want to make a motion to close public session.
I think we're all.
Yeah. So. You're most.
Motion to close public session.
Second.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Any? Let's uh, we could open up to the public. Anybody has any questions regarding this? Let's, we could open up to the public, anybody has any questions regarding this application, comments?
Want to make a motion to grant. Want to make a motion to grant the two-year extension as requested.
Second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bressing. Mr. Bernstein.
Yes.
Dr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Fleming.
Yeah.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Heller.
Yes.
Mr. Herring. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Herman.
Yes.
That's it, thank you all.
Have it, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good to see you again.
Nice, so that that's all, just any members in the public here for any other applications? They will, they were all moved, thank you. Before we close, I would like. Believe that our attorney would like, you know, advise that he has that maybe maybe an update for a closed session.
If the board pleases, we can go into executive session for litigation update, I believe personnel.
Can I please have a motion to enter executive session?
Motion to enter executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Can we move to the bathroom? Backroom? Since Mr. Wall isn't here. Do we have a key to the bathroom?
No, we can go to a console room. To small console room.